Good evening and welcome to the January 27th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please. Councilmembers Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here.
Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Devine.
Stand. Place your hand over your heart. Repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Famous American poet and writer Emily Dickinson wrote, "I dwell in impossibility." Her poem was about the possibility that her pen held as a creative writer who wrote poems that captured and moved the hearts of so many. By coming here each Tuesday night, we are choosing to dwell in impossibility as well. As we gather in these chambers, may we acknowledge the courage that has taken each one of us to take this step towards realizing all of the potential that life has for us. As councilmembers, as community leaders, staff, residents, stakeholders, and everyone who makes our jewel city sparkle. Let us pray that we continue to dwell in our possibility with enthusiastic and passionate resolve. Let us pray as well for the possibility of world peace in our lifetime and for the safety of those who are in harm's way trying to make this a reality. Let us pray for the men and women of our armed forces and for their return home from duty to join their families once again. We pray for this tonight and always. Amen. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the January 27, 2015, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 22, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Before we move on to the presentations and appointments, I want to let everyone know that Item 9B, the one related to 1407 Glen Oaks Boulevard project, is off the calendar. So anyone who's here. Continued. Continued to date certain.
It will be continued to March 3rd.
March 3rd. So anyone who's here for that item, there's no need to wait. Mr. City Attorney.
If you want to have it, Mr. Mayor, if you want to have it read to the record now and continue it.
Will someone move to continue Item 2?
So moved.
Second. May we have the roll call, please?
Certainly. And again, this is for 9A, Director of Economic Development regarding suspend activities and not levy assessment.
No, I'm sorry. 9B.
9B.
Thank you. For 9B, it is for Director of Community Development, continued from November 18, 2014, and December 9, 2014, request for approval of the precise plan of design PPD overlay zone and related approvals pertaining to the proposed mixed-use development consisting of 74 residential units and approximately 10,600 square feet of commercial space to be located at 1407 Glen Oaks Boulevard. This is an item that is now being moved to be continued to March 3, 2015. Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Ah.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes.
And apparently no one was here on that item anyway. Oh, well. Next item on the agenda?
Next item on the agenda, the presentation appointments at 3 is Agenda Preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 3, 2015.
Yes. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for February 3, we have no business agenda items that afternoon. We do have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Successor Agency. Actually, we have one item that afternoon, and it is an item that is listed on your agenda for this evening under 8C, under Action Items, 8C, and that's Director of Public Works and Library Arts and Culture, Central Library Renovation Project. And this is in connection with Spec. Number 3551R. That's actually being moved from this evening to next week so that it could be heard by both the City Council and the Successor Agency. On February 3 that evening, for the City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of items. Under Consent, we have General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. This is regarding utility street repair project. Under Consent, Item C, Chief of Police. This is an extension of a sole source approval and contract amount increase to a previously accepted and allocated United States Department of Homeland Security, which is a UAWC grant, and this is the 2013 grant. Under Action Items, we have two items, and this is Director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks. This is regarding Stengel Ball Field Clubhouse and Bleacher Demolition and Brand Park Restaurant Demolition and Grading Project. And lastly, we have Director of Community Development, and this is regarding incentives in the downtown specific plan. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
8C.
8C has also been continued.
Yes.
Microphone, please. Item 8C has also been continued to which date?
Next Tuesday.
Next to the next meeting, next Tuesday.
In the afternoon at 3:00 PM, and it's a joint meeting of the Successor Agency and the City Council.
Okay. We need a motion on that?
No.
No.
Okay, great. So if anyone's here for 8C, you don't need to be until next Tuesday. Okay. No one's here on 8C either. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Beers. Next item?
At 3B is a presentation by Fire Chief Harold Scoggins for a 35-year service award to Fire Battalion Chief Ronald Gully.
You've been here 35 years, Harold.
We have a few people here tonight, but, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Ochoa, Ms. Beers, thank you for taking the time out of your schedule tonight to recognize our most tenured member of the Glendale Fire Department, Battalion Chief Ron Gully. It was January 21, 1980, that Ron started here with the Glendale Fire Department. And just to give you a little information about the department, back in 1980, we were running about 8,000 calls a year. Last year, in 2014, over 18,000 calls. Back in 1980, our rigs were yellow. We have almost completely transitioned back to fire engine red that we like so much. Ron started off his life in Torrance. He graduated from North Torrance High School, class of '74. How about that? That's a couple of days ago, huh, Ron?
It seems like it.
Yeah. I hear there's people, there's a little pool going around about how old I am.
I'm not going to attempt to guess that. I know you've been here 35 years. After high school, Ron attended L.A. Harbor College, and he received an AA degree from El Camino College in fire science back in 1978, before he started off here with the Glendale Fire Department. Ron has progressed through the ranks. 1984, he became a fire engineer. Those are the individuals that actually drive the engines and the ladders around the community. 1987, he became a fire captain, and he held that position for 23 years. He was actually our most senior captain before he promoted to Battalion Chief back in 2010. Ron has had a variety of different assignments. He's worked in operations on all the platoons, administrative assignments. One of the things that you may notice the most here at City Hall is Ron was a part of our team that actually developed out the ELC downstairs back in the late '80s. Ron was a key part in that. And one of the things that you may also notice is whenever we have a disaster here in Glendale for about the last 25 years or so, the first person that we're on the phone with is getting Gully in town to make sure our ELC runs smoothly. He's done so much work down there. He's also worked in fire prevention as a captain, when that's when we had our sworn officers out in the field doing fire inspections and doing a number of different things like that. Disaster management has been his world. Our lives changed back in 9/11, and Homeland Security was established, and the federal government started issuing grants to local communities to help strengthen the resources here in the community. Ron was our point person for many, many years related to that, and he actually represented the city of Glendale in many of those meetings going after millions and millions of dollars for the city of Glendale, and we were able to do so many things that we have today. Ron was around when our USAR program, our special operations program, was just an idea back in the late '80s and early '90s. Ron played a key part in actually getting it typed by the state as a Type 1 Urban Search and Rescue Team here. Here in L.A. County, we're fortunate enough to have 22 urban search and rescue teams. Not all are typed. Glendale was at the front of that line tied to Ron's leadership. When we also needed to develop out our regional training site up at Shoal Canyon, Ron was the person put on that assignment, working with six other fire departments. We developed six of those around L.A. County, and Glendale was one of the spots that we got one, and Ron played a key part in that. Ron's done many, many things for the organization. Ron has consistently been involved in the community. I walked into his office today and looking at some of the memorabilia that he has, and Ron's probably the few people in the city to actually have the key to the city for Rosarito. Ron played a key part many, 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 many years going down to our sister city in Rosarito. We had an annual trip where we would go down and conduct training for the bomberos down in Rosarito, but Gully would show up, and everyone's, "Gully, Gully, Gully." They all know Ron. He got a key to the city. Another piece of memorabilia he has, he has a nice bar stool in there. That's a special, a special piece also. You'll have to stop by. There's a story associated with that. Many of you have seen Ron at many lunch and learns that he's done for the Chamber. Over the years, anytime there was a story to be told about the Glendale Fire Department, whether Ron was working or not, he was always the person at the lunch and learn. And it reminded me, when I saw Ray Edie in the back of the room, and Ron and Ray are really close, Ray and Ron would be doing those lunch and learns. I saw Ron Farina walk in the room tonight. Ron has been an active member on the Glendale Red Cross and a great partner over the years, and that's why they're here tonight. You have a retired L.A. County Battalion Chief here tonight, here to support Ron also. Ron's done many, many things. Ron has three boys. One of his boys is here tonight. Tim came all the way in from Arizona. It's my understanding that he tried to surprise Dad a little bit, but that turned out to be his surprise, and there's a story to be told there later. But Ron also has two other sons, Brian and Michael. You know, we're blessed to have members of our organization who care as much as Battalion Chief Ron Gully for this community. A lot of times, the community doesn't see the amount of time that our people put in. Ron has been the shining example for our people to see, for the love of our profession. He's taken thousands and thousands of hours of trying to get better at what we do, and we're blessed to have him as our most tenured member of the Glendale Fire Department. So, Mr. Mayor, it's my honor to present to you Battalion Chief Ron Gully for his 35-year pen.
Wow. 35 years. I was kind of going over that, and the chief does a very good job. I gave him some notes, and he memorized them all, but I know he's followed my career here for all this time. This morning, I took a little time to add one of these to my sleeve. You get one of these for every five years, so I have seven now. And that was kind of a ritual, you know, for us. It kind of makes you lean a little this way. That, so I did that this morning, and then I was thinking about all the things that I've gone through, and Chief, I got to tell you, you're my fifth fire chief.
I can't remember. Who started?
Have you ever had that?
Well, it was back when it was Allen Stone.
Stone, Montenaro, Hens, Biggs, Gray.
Oh, that's right. Chief Biggs is, yeah, he's not on the.
He's not on the wall.
He's not on the wall, so that's right. You're number six, so thanks for correcting me on that. Gosh, when I was making choices for a profession, you know, we all make choices, and fortunately I made an early choice, and I found something that I liked to do, and the key is I found a place to do it, and that was Glendale. Glendale has provided me with the opportunity to, you know, have fun and enjoy, you know, this profession and the way it's gone. It's just enlightened me, you know, to be able to serve and have that servant's heart, you know, to provide and help the community. You know, it's, the career's great. It's awesome, but not everybody can do it, and I'm glad, you know, I was able to do it, and I was able to do it in Glendale. You know, we get to solve problems. We get to go on scene. I was on a fire just earlier today on Bowdrie Terrace. The crews did an awesome job. We keep small fires small, and my job there as the Battalion Chief is to keep them safe, whether it's, you know, monitoring their actions or actually providing more resources to make that job safer for them. But they were able to confine it to the one room in that house, and they did a great job, and I'm really proud of them. The other piece that I do is emergency management, and I've kind of listed it here. It's turning chaos into calm. And I, and I just like, you know, being able to come in and taking what looks like, you know, all kinds of crazy things going on and just bringing it all calm and getting everything organized like that, so. This city, again, when I tell new recruits, you know, if you want to go look for a place to work, you got to find a leadership in the city councils, the city management, the organizations, that they support public safety, they support the infrastructure of the city, and the services they provide to the community. Very, very important, you know, for your own livelihood in your own profession, because that's an important aspect in looking for, you know, this, this type of job. In closing, I'm still having a great time. I've met a lot of great people here. These are all my friends, and I've made new friends, hopefully. And, you know, I enjoy keeping my firefighters safe and serving the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Gully. I'm certain that my colleagues and me have a lot of nice things to say right now, and we have some special gifts for you, but before we do that, Glendale Fire Foundation is also here, and they would like to say a few words and present you with a gift. Zawin Kazazian and Sharon Townsend.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, staff. Ron, what can I tell you? 35 years. Well, Chief Scoggins, Sharon Townsend, and myself are representing the Glendale Fire Foundation, would like to present you with a plaque that basically shows our appreciation for all the work that you do. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it, and from the Fire Foundation, and this is here to remember us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kazazian. Would you like to go first? Yes. Laura Friedman.
Well, I think everyone in Glendale is very proud of our fire department, of our Class 1 rating, of the work of the individuals in that fire department. And as much as they are individuals, there are some people who kind of rise up as being one of the main faces of that organization, and Ron, you have been that for so many years. Of course, the chief is too. Want to be sure that we're, you know, recognizing everybody, but this is your night, so, yeah. Chief, step aside. This is your night. And you really are. I mean, every time there is a major event, you are there. When there are activities in the community that the fire department participates in, you are there. When there are events that are important community events, you are there. You represent us so well. You have made us proud for these 35 years, and I hope that you stick around for at least another 30. We can count on that, right?
Poor guy.
Maybe for, for a while longer. You do an amazing job. Our entire fire department does an amazing job, and I really want to thank you. And I feel, as a resident, comforted to know that we have the fire department that we do, and even more comforted to know that you're there in the EOC when we need you, and you're there on the street. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Thank you. Ms. Najarian?
Chief Gully, we are very proud of you, and you're not only an asset to the city of Glendale, but you're an asset internationally, especially with our sister city of Rosarita. Before, before we get too many more weeks down the road, I think it's time for a reunion tour down to Rosarita, so they also can pay their respects and appreciation.
Is that called a road trip?
Let's call it a field investigation. throughout the entire organization. And I see all these young firefighters in the back and looking at you, and they're saying, "Wow, I've been on here, you know, two years, three years. You know, I can't wait to be like, like Gully." So you are an inspiration. You're, you're an upstanding, that's why people love firemen. I mean, you are the epitome of that. And, you know, if I had to do it over again, maybe I'd be a fireman, but I took the, I took the wrong road. Really, I took the wrong road. But you've done a great job. You've kept us safe. You've helped us from accidents and fires and medical emergencies, so I'm very proud of you, and congratulations on your 35 years.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll keep mine. Thank you. I'll keep mine short. Ron, you've quite a resume, my friend, and quite a busy day today, too. I thought about you when I heard about the fire, and I said, "Wow, this is a big day for Ron." I think, I thank you for your service, as I do all the firemen, but as Laura said, this is your, your night. And I think the show of all of your friends and fellow workers is a testament to your good heart, to your service to this community, and your commitment to our city and our residents. And I can only say thank you so much, and good luck for the rest of your tenure as our Battalion Chief. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Proud to call you a friend.
Mr. Weaver?
Okay. How many more years are you going to stick around, Ron?
He always put us on the spot for that.
I knew from the Montenaro one, I've known all those chiefs, you know, and you were here even before that. I can't add much more. We've been friends for many years, and you finally got what you deserved, a bat chief. And I don't know, I imagine it won't be too many more years. Well, no, you enjoy what you're doing. 35, I'll be surprised you make to 40. That'll be something else, if your guys don't kick you out before then. But you've done a lot of good things. It's been said, and I've enjoyed all my times with you, that we've been able to talk and stuff. And I know you'll do a lot more down in the EOC, because we're going to have more events as you, as, as we all know will happen. So thank you so much, and thanks for sticking around for 35.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Chief Gully, just to put into perspective, I was six years old when I started.
Okay.
It's, it's a lifetime. 35 years in the same department, on the same job, that's a lifetime. I mean, you've basically dedicated your, your life to Glendale and Glendale's Fire Department, which is very much appreciated by its residents, its administration, staff, council, present and past, I'm sure. Stick around as long as you need to stick around to impart your knowledge, your expertise to our young firefighters. In case the cameras can't capture, we have a few dozen firefighters standing in the back. The chamber is full of attendees, so thank you once again, and to many more years to come. We have a few things that we'd like to present to you, but before we do that, and I'm going to ask my colleagues, Mr. Najarian, Ms. Devine, we have a commemorative plaque that we're going to present to you. I'd like to read it before coming down and present it to you personally. 35 years service award presented to Ronald Gully. The certificate is an expression of sincere appreciation for 35 years of loyal and faithful service. May the future bring you a full measure of those endowments which long service and devotion to duty so richly deserve. Mayor Sinanian. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
The city seal. You can put the key to the city of Rosarita Beach in there. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Can we get a picture with the council and Chief Gully? Hold it, sir.
Why don't we go to the next item, Item 3D?
At 3C, actually. That was a mislabeling. Sorry. We apologize, Mayor. At 3C is a group of young leaders who were not even born when Battalion Chief Ron started his career. It's my honor to introduce or read into the record the mayor's commendation to Bikes for Orphans Organization for giving orphans the gift of education through bicycles.
Okay. Come on down.
Hello, Mayor Sinanian and councilmembers. My name is Sean Beziken. I am a junior at St. Francis High School and president of a nonprofit organization called Bikes for Orphans. With me tonight are three of our members. Tommy, who is a member of our St. Francis High School Bikes for Orphans Club; Dina Garibian, who came with me to Armenia to deliver the bicycles; and Matthew Davidian, who started the Bikes for Orphans Club at Clark Magnet High School. We are here tonight to teach you about, let you know about our organization and to invite you and all of Glendale's residents to our second annual Bike-athon and Hike-athon event at the, on February 28 at 9:00 AM at the Glendale Sports Complex. But first, let me tell you a little bit about us. Our group is run by teenagers, four orphaned teenagers. We raise funds to purchase bicycles for orphans in third-world countries so they can have a faster access to school. Most orphans have to walk one to two hours every day just to get to school. The bikes give them an easier access to school, motivate them to do better, and give them an opportunity for a brighter future. In the last two years, we have been able to raise more than $26,000 and deliver more than 100 bicycles to five orphanages in three different countries: Kenya, South Africa, and Armenia. Funds for these deliveries were mostly raised through friends and family, local businesses, online grants, Glendale Rotary Club, and our first Bike-athon. This year's event will be even better. We not only have St. Francis's mountain biking team to help us, but also Clark's and CV Bike Team. We will also have live music by a teenage music group called Major Minus, so I hope we can, I'm truly showing you that this organization is led by teens for teens. But without adult participation and support, we only can do so much. Our first Bike-athon, which was collaborated with St. Francis Bike Team, was a great success. We're grateful that Councilmember Friedman was able to join along us, join with us, along with 100 local residents, and we were able to raise more than $8,000, which changed many orphans' lives in our next delivery to Armenia. In addition, our group is registered as a nonprofit organization through a local organization called FCN, or Focus on Children Now. They help, they help kids all around the world. All donations are tax deductible, and we hope that the Glendale community will participate and experience a beautiful hiking trail, the Catalina Verdugo Trail, next to the Glendale Sports Complex. For every six people that show up, we will be able to donate one bike. In other words, we'll be able to change an orphan's life forever. Thank you again for this opportunity to share our event with you, and I have provided you with more details about our group, and our flyer is up there. If you don't mind, I would like to have our other members share a little information.
Hello, Glendale City Council. I'd like to talk to you guys a little bit about my experiences in Armenia. Visiting the summer camp and children with disabilities camp in Armenia was an enlightening experience, and because of Bikes for Orphans, I was able to truly see firsthand what these kids were going through. Seeing their face when they were given the bikes was priceless. They were so thankful and appreciative, it made me realize that doing this for them was huge in their life, and I will never forget what it was like to directly help these children. Bikes for Orphans has taught me that anyone can start something as inspiring as this organization, and what Chotin Sabu have done has directly impacted so many young lives. I am so proud to know them and be involved in their work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. I just wanted to make an announcement. Wanted to send a message to any high schooler that is interested in creating a club at their high school. Please contact me or Sabu at our Facebook and Twitter page. We're very proud to have successful clubs at Clark Magnet and at St. Francis, and it would be amazing to see more clubs bloom in our community high schools.
Thank you. Notice how they're all reading off.
Thank you. Notice how they're all reading off of their phones as opposed to paper? I wish you weren't born when Chief Gully started serving.
Hello, City Council. I'm Tommy Christopoulos, and I'm a member of the St. Francis Bikes for Orphans Group. And since probably many teenagers will be watching this, I'd like to target them that if they're interested in participating in this event, the Bike-A-Thon and the Hike-A-Thon on February 28th, they'll be receiving service hours, and like Shont said, it's very important because it's provided by teens for teens for the orphanages in the countries that we've so far visited. And it's, if you're interested in participating in this event, look on our Facebook and Twitter pages at Bikes for Orphans, and we just like to present this opportunity to anybody, particularly teenagers, but adults, children, anything. Please come. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm trying to understand, how did you come up with this idea? And the idea is wonderful, and I'm sure other people have done it, but at your age, it's, I mean, it's amazing to have that type of compassion and involvement, you know, mental involvement with helping other people. How did that come about?
So, I have to, of course, give credit to my brother, forgot to mention that, but he was the one who started the organization two years ago. I later joined on, but he was an avid bicyclist, and he, our parents sponsored an orphanage in Africa, and we learned that these kids were walking one to two hours every day in, under the African sun, and in meager conditions, some didn't even have shoes. So, with my brother's passion of cycling, we were able to solve a very large problem with a simple solution, which was bicycles. And now that he's off to college, I took up the responsibility, and I hope I'm making him proud.
Okay. I know when you're saying my brother, I know he's a little older, but he was still sixteen when he did it.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Still, I mean, my question was somewhat rhetorical in nature, because, again, it's seldom at that age, I mean, I reflect back on myself, I, you know, I, I didn't do it. So, kudos to you. It's wonderful. And you guys are thinking way outside the box, and you're doing something very unique, and it's great, just all-around great. My colleagues, yeah. Ms. Friedman?
Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to echo what you said. When I was a teenager, back when the chief was starting his career here at Glendale, yeah, we never did anything like this. And, you know, it's funny, I was thinking about how every generation always says things like, these lousy kids today, they don't do this, that, or the other thing. But I think, from what I've seen, that teenagers today are doing a whole lot more good and are a lot more active in the community than my generation was at their age. So, I really admire you all. And I did attend your first Bike-A-Thon, and it was amazing. And the outpouring of support that you were able to get from the community, and the way you, that people were brought together under this cause was really inspirational. And I was educated, because living in a, in this country and being privileged as we all are, we think of bikes often as recreation, even though for some people it is their primary mode of transportation. But in the developing world, where there aren't buses and other forms of transportation, it is so crucial. And I was educated by your group about how these bicycles really change the lives of the people who you gave them to. Like you said, a fairly simple solution to a very large problem. I only hope that your organization continues to grow. It's all the more admirable for being fronted by and led by teenagers. I am in awe of all of you and your volunteers, and anyone who's watching, if you have teenagers who aren't watching, and why would they be watching? They should be doing their homework. Please, let them, you know, tune them into these kids, and maybe it's something that will be of interest to them. So, congratulations, and I hope you have a great event. I'll try to make it again.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. And do you have something?
I just, I just want to say that as a former educator, this is quite an accomplishment, and I do, I'm just amazed by all of you, and I just love you all. And can you tell me this? Is there any way that people that are watching tonight can send a donation to you? Do we, would we send it, or would they send it, to Clark Magnet, or where could they, how could they help? If they, like, for instance, myself, I'm not going to ride a bike to do this, because I'm probably the same age as Ron Gully, but anyway. But, or older, but what can we do, those of us that?
Thank you for your question. So, if you contact us on our Facebook page and send us a message, we can give you the necessary steps to send us a donation. We'll give you the address and so forth. But also to address the question for our older generation, you're more than welcome to smart, wiser, wiser generation.
Seasonal.
To come and, for our, to come to our event and just hang out and hopefully support us.
I, I think I'll probably come and hang out, but for those of us that are old-school and don't do Facebook, what about those people that are out there?
Get on Facebook.
Sometimes we're very, yeah, right. Don't push it, huh? Anyway, good luck to you, and I think it's absolutely fabulous what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you go off, so I do want to make sure you guys get in touch with Walk Bike Glendale, because they're cyclists and, I guess, walking organization, and they're certainly very committed to the whole promotion, the whole culture of cycling, getting from one point to the other. I know your, your organization has a certain twist to it, it's for a specific purpose, but I think there's a lot of room for you to cooperate with them, and they should be supporting you. And I hope they do. I have a commendation which I'd like to present to you, and I'd like to read it before I do so. Bikes, presented to Bikes for Orphans in recognition of your dedication and hard work in raising thousands of dollars to provide bicycles to orphans. I truly commend your exemplary efforts to help orphans around the world have access to a brighter future. You're an inspiration to youth looking to make a change in the world. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success in your future endeavors. Congratulations on your accomplishments. Now, I'm going to ask.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes, of course. Yes, you do.
No pun intended, but I keep losing friends my age, the older generation, and two more have passed on since, since we met last. And I'd like to read a little bio on both of them. One is Elizabeth Evans, who I knew as Betty Evans when she worked here as the city treasurer. I didn't realize she was born at West Point Military Academy and came to Glendale in '49 with her mother and sister and brother. She married Bill Evans, another friend, in 1960, three children, Daniel, Teresa, and Michael. Began her career by working at Studio Girl in Glendale as an accounting agent. She went on to bookkeeping for many local Glendale businesses. She was also a teacher's aide at Holy Family School. She began her career with the city of Glendale in 1980 as a clerk typist in the data services division. Clerk typist. She was transferred to the treasurer's office in '84, was appointed to complete the term of her retiring predecessor, and then she won reelection as the city treasurer in '85, '89, and '93. After retiring from the city of Glendale in '99, she continued her activities by helping out at Holy Family Catholic Church. She was known for her love of music, crossword puzzles, reading, nature, and animals. She was frequently seen volunteering at local animal shelters, yes, and she was devoted to her family, her church, community, and civic organizations. She is survived by her husband and children, four grandchildren, sister, and brother. If anybody wishes to donate, they may do so to City of Hope Cathy Chapter in her honor. And I miss, I miss remembering very well how many times she came in here and gave the treasurer's report. The other gentleman we lost in this city, Norman Mamie, he was just here in December speaking, and I knew him for many years, too. He's the former conductor of the Glendale Symphony Orchestra. He died Thursday after a battle with pancreatic cancer, only sixty-six. Mamie launched his new orchestra at the Alex Theater in December with a holiday program titled Christmas Musical Spectacular, the December 13th show that he conducted, when it ended up being his last one. He was a conductor, a producer, a musical director. He achieved many accomplishments throughout his career. He won a Grammy Award for Best Children's Musical Album for Elmo and the Orchestra with the Seattle Symphony, and scored and arranged music for television shows and motion pictures, including Man on the Moon starring Jim Carrey. He directed the Christmas Eve Celebration at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion for a number of years, and taught at UCLA, Pepperdine, and Citrus College. At the time of his death, he was also the chairman of the advisory board of the Glendale Salvation Army. He's survived by his wife, M.J. Carmy, and his four daughters, his brother, and his sister. You may, if you wish to donate, it'd be to the Los Angeles Premier Orchestra, P.O. Box 8683 in San Marino. Easier, you might want to call 310-567-9542. Those are two good people that we lost in just the last month or so.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. We shall adjourn today in the memories of Betty Evans and Norman Mamie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next is consent items following the routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I believe we're pulling a couple of items. Ms. Friedman?
I will be voting on the consent items, but I'm going to recuse myself from item four A, as I was not here to approve the minutes. Do I need to pull that, or can I just vote on the remainder of the consent calendar in the same motion?
Because it's consent, you can, yeah, vote with all the items.
So, we can just make a note that I'm recusing, or recusing myself from four A. Thank you.
Mr. Najarian?
I'd like to pull four C for discussion, please.
Two, Ms. Devine?
And I'd like to pull four G.
Thank you. You can take a vote on the remainder of the?
Move the remainder consent calendar.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Four C is Director of Community Development regarding non-infrastructure safe routes to school programs. C1 is a resolution appropriating $500,000 to fund the project.
Okay, who's going to present the item? Loomis?
I, our?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can focus.
Okay.
Focus my concerns. So, this is a $500,000 grant that we got from the federal Safe Routes to School.
Correct.
Program, and we are paying $440,000 to the Safe Routes to School consultant. So, my question is, who is that consultant? And it's a significantly large sum of money, and I'd like to have a little bit of detail as to what their plans are, and, well, who they are, what their experience is, and the extent of the community outreach, including bilingual, multilingual outreach to the different ethnic communities in Glendale.
Absolutely. We do not have a consultant selected yet. Upon your, should you vote in favor of this, we will issue an RFP to consultant, the consultant world, requesting for qualifications, and go through the rigorous process of interviewing consultants that would perform this work. We could certainly add into the RFP an interest in community engagement and evaluate their qualifications regarding the multilingual, multi-ethnic nature of Glendale. So, at this point, we don't have a consultant yet, and there's a range of consultant teams out there that could do this kind of work.
I think that would be a great idea, because we do have so many ethnic communities in Glendale, and I think the broader our outreach can be, the better. So, if that can be included, I think it would only serve our, our purpose, which is to reduce traffic and pedestrian accidents.
Absolutely.
Would be very much to that end.
And of course, once we select a team to actually enter into a contract with that consultant, it'll come back to council.
Great. Thank you.
So, how did we come up with that $500,000 amount if we haven't?
This was part of the grant that we submitted through the Safe Routes to School program. To put this into context, we've received, including this grant money, $3.3 million over probably the past six years related to safe routes to school projects. Most of it has been focused on crosswalks and infrastructure around the schools.
Okay, but, but half a million of it was designated for this specific purpose? Is that?
Specifically, yeah. When we talk about pedestrian safety, bike safety, they talk about the five Es. One of them is engineering, which is what most of the money has gone to. Education, encouragement, evaluation are a big part of the program. So, this will focus on continuing education programs focused with the schools, about walking safe, biking safe. Another part of this would be to evaluate, are we actually increasing the number of kids walking to schools? Because we've done counts, where we've done projects of how many kids are walking to school at those intersections before we did the engineering work.
And if the bids come in much lower than $500,000, what happens with the balance of the money?
Fred, will we do the balance of the money? We return it?
We can extend it.
We can extend it, yeah.
Can we check the, you know, our scope and go back and look at what item we can add to it and use our money wisely?
In essence, we can use that money for a related purpose?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Devine?
You said it could be a consultant or a group of consultants, and for how long is this, would this contract be?
We have this for a two-year project.
Two years?
Yes.
$440,000?
Yep. So, and it could be a, a single consultant office, but it could be a team.
Okay.
And congratulations, by the way, for the, for the grant. I mean, that's great. That's a, a great record of getting those funds for the last four, five years.
And this, this is a great, I mean, the purpose of the program is, is very good. And as Councilmember Najarian stated, we, we want to do a good job. We want to be, we want to provide good results from having spent all this money. So, I join in, as the member Najarian's concerned that the makeup of Glendale, or the specifics of Glendale should certainly be taken into consideration in selecting the bidder, selecting the winner of the bid.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll move four C.
Second.
Okay, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Item four?
G.
G.
Thank you.
Four G is City Manager regarding costs associated with ballot measure CDENO for the April 2015 general municipal elections. G1 is motion authorizing to execute a professional services agreement with Sorrel and Associates, Inc. G2 is a motion authorizing to execute a professional services agreement with Martin and Chapman Company, and C3 is a resolution appropriating $212,750.
Right. Do you want to state your concerns, or you want to hear the report?
Well, I would like to hear a report, please.
I can.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. And may please, council, the item before you is an extension of the council's direction to place on the ballot four additional ballot measures. The districting measure for the city, the districting measure for the school district, the considered tax, TOT, transient occupancy tax, increase from 10% to 12% on hotel rooms, and last but not least, council compensation. So, in the expansion of the items that would be on the general municipal election ballot come April, the consultant that we use, Martin and Chapman, whose fee is factored into our budget for the cost of administering those elections, the actual machines operating them, supervising them, maintaining them, would actually increase by a proportionate amount, in this case, about $25,000 per measure. We, that's half of the cost that you see here. The other half is allocated between Sorrel Associates, Inc., who is a consulting firm that we would use for the production of materials, website materials, focused on education. that we would use for the production of materials, website materials, focused on education on the measure O. We had looked at possibly doing education materials on all of the items. At this point, we've isolated on measure O the potential increase of the transient occupancy tax, the TOT bed tax, and that would cost us about $35,000 with Sorrel. The balance of that money goes towards the postage for the materials that they would generate, the production of those materials, and we would disseminate those to Glendale households, as well as voter lists, as well as contingency. So those are the elements of the $112,750. The Martin &amp; Chapman piece, I believe, is $100,000.
Ms. Devine?
And the $400,000?
That's the cost of actually running the general municipal election.
And you said that's the machines and...
Yeah. Mr. Kosakian does not run the elections unto himself. We will bring in a consultant. I won't speak for Artie, he's here.
If I can elaborate on that, it's the entire cost of it, this is pretty much in line with whatever the cost has been for previous elections. Obviously, every election, Councilmember Devine and Mayor and Council, postage goes up, cost of materials goes up, and the cost is kept in line with those increases. In addition to that, we must remember that the entire cost of this election is not absorbed by the city itself. We split the cost with two other entities for whom we run the elections. So we will recoup some of this after the election, and if there are elections, in the previous regularly scheduled municipal election, the community college did not have a contest, so they did not have an election, therefore they did not have to pay into the cost. But should there be, at the time of certifying the signatures, the requisite number of signatures for all of the contested offices that are up for consideration this time, we may potentially be able to split the cost three ways. We will certainly be able to split it, at least with the school district, because irregardless of whether they have a contest or not, they are going to have a measure on the ballot.
So we might, we will be getting some of this, these funds?
As Mr. Kosakian indicates, to the extent that the other agencies, the college district, the school district, participate in general municipal election, there would be some refund for those proportionate costs.
And you sent an email and said something, gave me an amount for postage related, what was that amount?
$64,000, I think it is. 64 plus the 35 for Sorrel, plus the $2,000 for the lists and data, and $1,500 for the translation services, $10,250 as contingency adds to $112,750.
Okay, and these are going to be sent to every household, or just registered voters?
I believe they go to, I don't, that's a good, it's for registered voters.
Just registered voters? Okay, that's good. Okay.
I have a question. More concern than a question. Last year, when I believe it was Sorrel Associates was hired to do a study on the feasibility of the TOT tax and the likelihood of it succeeding on the ballot, I believe I expressed my disagreement with the results, with the factual results of the work that was done in terms of the percentages of certain groups that had been reached out to. I mean, this wasn't a matter of 8% to 10%, you know, 2% here or there. It was, this was a matter of 8% of certain contingent having been reached, as opposed to 44% or 45%. So the numbers were way off. Now, they're being hired for a purpose, both these consultants. There's a result that we anticipate, right? I mean, that's...
Yes, sir.
That's their mission. So in order for that mission to be accomplished successfully, in order for that purpose to be fulfilled, they have to take Glendale's makeup into consideration. Otherwise, it's going to be a failure, and this money's going to be wasted. So I want to make sure that these consultants, who will be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars, are mindful of that and take all the criticism. We had a follow-up meeting with them, if you remember, and there was pretty much an agreement at the end of the day that something went wrong with that study. So I want to make sure that they take those comments and corrections into consideration when they implement this contract, in order for them to be successful and be productive.
Yes, sir.
I have another question. Are they going to be mailing out all of this information before March 8th? Because that's when the absentee ballots come out and...
Well, first of all, allow me to clarify that March 8th is when the absentee ballots can start going out.
Correct.
If they're ready, the translations are accurate, but they will, we have until March 17th to actually send them out. So there's a window. They can go out on March 8th if everything is ready to go and is in proper order, or they may go out later. I don't, I refrain from giving a hard date, because in the past, when that has been done, people become upset when it's not in their mailbox the next day.
Right.
And as to the other part of that question, I will back to...
Well, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't spend all of this money getting this information out to our residents, and it gets out after the absentee ballots, and they've already voted, and they don't have this in...
Councilmember Devine and Mayor and Council, I can assure you that the people who are doing this do this for a living, and they're professionals, and they will make sure that it gets out there before people actually receive their ballots.
All right.
And I'll just add there are certain legal requirements in terms of when things can be sent out, and so that's something that the consultant, along with the State Clerk's Office and our office, have to coordinate together in terms of the timing. Mr. Najarian?
And my other question is, I want to make sure that the work of Sorrel &amp; Associates with their outreach is neutral, and that it is not advocacy one way or the other, because that would be...
By law, it has to be. It's informational only, just to provide information about what the purpose of the TOT is and what it can be used for, but it cannot be and will not be advocacy, both in terms of its express language, nor the tone or tenor of the materials will be advocacy either.
Would any of that come to council for review, to make sure that we don't have objections with the...
I would recommend that it not come to council for that very reason. That it be left to staff to, and especially, particularly my department, to review to ensure that it meets the requirements of law.
There are subtle ways to influence voters, as the professionals know. Color, scheme, font size. I want to make sure that it is not any of that, that it's entirely informational only, not suggesting any vote one way or the other on any of these issues.
It will comply with the legal requirements.
I'm going to leave it up to your fine team of attorneys and our Director of Communications.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I will move 4G.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's have roll call.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yersonanian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments at item number five on the agenda.
Okay. Ms. Devine?
Okay, well, this was a busy week for, I think, all of us. I want to congratulate, I suppose, I hope everyone knows that Glendale received an A grade from the Lung Association for the sixth year in a row for working to control the use and sale of tobacco products, and I think, thank you. We're the largest city in the state to receive this, such a grade, so I congratulate the work that we've been doing in our city on clean air. Attended the Didi Hirsch grand opening. They did some remodeling, air conditioning, and other construction in the building, and they also renamed it the Michael Antonovich Building for, in, as a thank you for all of the work that he's done for mental health and for the Didi Hirsch Association. That was quite an impressive ceremony, and I congratulate, congratulate them and Supervisor Antonovich. Also, I attended the Armenian Women's Coalition of Los Angeles, which was held at Woodbury. The theme of that conference was the resilient woman honoring the past and embracing the future. Quite a good turnout for that, and a very moving education and forum on the Armenian genocide and the perils that women went through, and what they are still going through today. So that was a quite important event. I wanted to announce that the traffic enforcement operations for Glendale are going to occur. The police department is going to step up their enforcement in an attempt to stop our pedestrian and cycling accidents. They are going to be enforcing in certain areas of our city, and they're going to cite drivers for violations, and bike riders, and pedestrians alike. And so additionally, enforcement will be taken for observed violations when pedestrians cross the street illegally or fail to yield to drivers who are ignoring the, or who have the right of way. The funding for the program for the additional police is through the California Office of Traffic Safety. So I compliment the police department and staff in the fact that they are stepping up to enforce our laws and to try to protect and safeguard our citizens, our cyclists, and also our drivers. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
A somber announcement, a somber announcement and a reminder that it was 10 years ago on January 26, 2005, that Glendale witnessed one of the worst tragedies in its history. During the early morning hours, an individual intentionally placed a vehicle on the railroad tracks that caused two MetroLink and a Union Pacific train to collide, causing the senseless loss of 11 lives, two of whom were Glendale city employees. Every department, division, and unit played a role in the rescue and the events following. In remembrance, let's just take a personal moment of reflection to respect those who lost their lives and have suffered irreparable harm, specifically members of our city family, Scott McKeown, who worked in the radio shop and was moving on to a second career with the city of Pasadena, and Elizabeth Hill, who worked in finance and was looking forward to her upcoming retirement. Probably the proudest moment that we as a city council had were the nonstop efforts of our fire department, and many of the men who were in the back of the room earlier, as well as Chief Gully, that were climbing in and out of the mangled and tangled shards of what was left of two MetroLink trains. It had derailed, and through a matter of bad luck, it was struck by a northbound Union Pacific freight train. They did a great job in coordinating with the L.A. Fire Department in rescuing hundreds of people, as well as our police department that helped in the investigation of this matter, which eventually resulted in 11 murder counts being filed against the individual who intentionally drove onto the tracks and abandoned his vehicle. Those charges resulted in 11 guilty verdicts, resulting in 11 life sentences for the perpetrator. We will never forget that day, and would like to call out to our first responders and everyone else in the community that supported that. And as a member of MetroLink, the loss was very hard on MetroLink also. Since that time in 2005, MetroLink has spent close to $500 million in making sure that their rail system is the safest perhaps in the entire country now. It involves a crash energy management cars, which absorb the crash, the forces of a crash, seats, rearward facing, tables which break away, automatic stop sensors which will stop a train if it goes too fast. The state-of-the-art is the Positive Train Control, which is a GPS-based, computer-controlled system to make sure no two trains are on the track at the same time, no train passes a switch, that no train exceeds a speed limit, or conducts any sort of action that is improper. We've installed inward-facing cameras into the cabs of the trains to make sure that the engineers are making no improper actions, or not on the telephone, or texting, or anything in that manner. And in Glendale, we've worked on creating the sealed corridor, and that's a lot of the construction headaches that the folks endured on San Fernando Road, were to make sure that no driver could accidentally be left on the tracks, and we hope that we never see an incident like this in Glendale again. It was a tragedy and hopefully never, never repeated.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
I have one other item, along with public safety. So we're all aware that Glendale has a terrible, maybe terrible is, has an unfortunate record of pedestrian accidents, and we on the council have tried almost everything to solve the problem, especially striped crosswalks, yield triangles far away from the crosswalks, lighted roadway embedded signals, bumpouts and striping, and almost everything. We initiated a new device today, along with Councilmember Devine and Transportation Commissioner Yakubian. It's rather old, we were talking about old school. This is an old-school device, and I'd like to hand one of the devices to Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
So, folks, these are the pedestrian crossing flags at several intersections in the city. These are going to be placed in the lamp posts, the light posts. So the idea is, if you'd like to cross the street, okay, follow me now, you pick up the flag and you raise it as you cross the street. We tested it out, and it really gets quite a response from the vehicles. They're a little bit shocked.
There we go.
You would wonder, wouldn't a vehicle see a pedestrian in a crosswalk? Well, sometimes they just don't, and it takes something as unusual as an orange flag to warn them and to encourage them to stop. When you're done crossing the street, it's very simple, you place it in the container at the other side. So please don't steal these flags. These are no good for any other purpose. You know, the Denver Broncos did not make the Super Bowl. The Cleveland Browns won't make it for several more years to come. So please, let's use these flags. They could save, save lives, and we hope that it works. So please try it out. If you're a pedestrian, please use it. If you're a driver, please be extra careful with or without flags, with or without, within marked crosswalks or not.
Can I add to that? I just, I had problems getting this one open, but rest assured, when they're on the poles, they are open already, so they're, you know, they'll wave in the wind. But we used these today. We crossed at Jackson in Colorado, and we noticed that when others were using these flags, that the cars actually slowed down before they even got to the crosswalks, because they saw the flags, and that is really a good thing. And the other observation that I made was, one car was coming, had to be going over 30, and all of a sudden saw the flag and just slammed on the brakes and stopped before the crosswalk. So these can be really effective if they're used. So I encourage everyone, if you see these in our, you know, on the crosswalks, on the poles, please use them. They are very effective. Thank you.
Thanks to Public Works for making it happen. You created the little receptacles, and Mauro Yakubian bought the first set of 200.
Yes, I was just going to say that. Thank you to her, yes.
We may have some sponsorship abilities if anyone in the audience would like their business name printed, to help defray the costs, and we'll see how it works, so.
Right.
Thank you. And as goofy as they look, they're very effective, and the feedback we're getting is very positive. They work. They're effective. How do we get young people to actually pick them up and cross the streets with them is another matter, but I think as, as we get into the habit of using these flags at these intersections, broader and broader, you know, sort of age spectrum of pedestrians will start using the flags without feeling uncomfortable. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
On another note, today is International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and I hope that everyone will take a moment to reflect on those terrible events, something that affected everybody in the world, really, when it comes down to it, and something that is a reminder of what we need to be vigilant. is a reminder of what we need to be vigilant of and prevent in the future. Um, also, we remember to honor those who lost their lives. Uh, on a personal note, my grandfather was brought to this country from Poland as a small boy. The rest of his family, I believe, stayed in Poland. Um, as far as we know, every single one of them was murdered by the Nazis during the Holocaust. HBO has a new documentary called Night Will Fall about some recently rediscovered or released footage that was shot by Alfred Hitchcock, of all people, in Auschwitz when it was liberated. Uh, this footage was not shown for political reasons at the time, which are very interesting, but it's amazing footage, uh, much more graphic unfortunately, but very, very effective, uh, more effective than a lot of what's been shown publicly over the years. So I recommend that anybody who has HBO, watch it on HBO, and I believe that parts of it, if not the whole thing, are also available on YouTube and Netflix. So, um, these reminders of what can happen are, are very important for us to, to always, to have from time to time and to teach our children. So I, I do recommend people seeing that documentary. Uh, on another note, I also, I attended some of the events that Ms. Divine mentioned this week. Uh, in addition, I was able to attend a wonderful luncheon that Glendale Memorial had where they gave away, I think it was $110,000 grant money to our local nonprofits, and I just wanted to mention some of the groups that were lucky enough to, to get some of this funding from Glendale Memorial. Essentia, which of course is our homeless shelter. Um, some people mistakenly think we don't have a homeless shelter because of the news about moving the emergency winter shelter this year, but we do have a full-time, all-year, um, homeless shelter that offers a full spectrum of care to its clients from job placement to housing to drug treatment, uh, and they're really wonderful and very deserving. Northeast Valley Health Corporation, Glendale Healthy Kids, which Ms. Divine has been involved in, uh, for so many years, providing health care to underinsured children, uh, Glendale Community Free Clinic, and Walk By Glendale, one of my favorite groups. Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, which is a newer nonprofit but incredibly effective so far. Glendale Community Services and our Parks Department being their partner, and Glendale Unified School District is a partner as well. Wellness Works, YWCA Glendale, and Trauma Resource Institute. So congratulations to all those groups, um, they'll put that money to good use, and thank you to Glendale Memorial. I was able to swear in the new Montrose Verdugo Chamber of Commerce members this last week. Congratulations to all of the, the new board members, and particularly Eric Hamilton from CV Insurance, who is the new chamber president. I know he's going to do a great job, I've known him for many years, he's a great guy. Uh, lastly, when this came up some time ago, I voted for it with some trepidation, but after hearing feedback from residents, I would like to ask my colleagues to allow us to revisit in the next budget cycle, which I believe will be in the spring or the summer of this year. The dog licensing fees, which we raised this year, and specifically the number of dogs that we're, um, counting to count towards a kennel. When you have just a dog, you have a certain fee, but if you hit a certain number of dogs, not just in Glendale, but in every city, you become a kennel and you have a much higher fee. Um, this city, we've adjusted that to three dogs. I think we should look into raising that to four, because I think a lot of people have three dogs without being a kennel, and it does discourage people from rescuing dogs and fostering dogs that otherwise could end up in shelters. So I do think four and above should stay a kennel, because you get four and more dogs and that's a lot of dogs to handle. Um, but I'd like to, to raise it from three to four. So it's not something we have to vote on now, but I'd like someone to second at least, bringing that discussion back when we have our budget talks later in the year.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Uh, Mr. Weaver appears to have no comments.
No comments.
Very well.
I have a few comments. Last week, I had the opportunity to represent the city of Glendale at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and it was a very educational and very substantive, even I would call it dense, um, conference, which provided a myriad of panels, uh, all pertinent to the city of Glendale, ranging from issues such as housing, CDBG funding, transportation projects, uh, federal grants for fire and safety, and many more. So I'd like to talk about some of them briefly, so just bear with me. Uh, a seminar on new metro economies, U.S. Trade Representative Michael Foreman was the main speaker, and he focused on bringing manufacturing jobs to you, to the U.S. This appeared to be, this message was conveyed to the, to the mayors over and over again, indicating, uh, federal government's commitment to bring manufacturing back to the U.S., meaning that there will be, uh, more favorable terms, there will be better loans from the SBA, and there will be infrastructural changes also made to allow for, um, more cost-effective production taking place in the United States. This seminar interestingly contained a, uh, survey conducted by Zogby Associates, which I've brought all the materials with me so that if anyone wants to take a look at it. Had some interesting results, I just want to give my colleagues some sense of comfort in terms of how Americans overall, as a result of this survey, feel about their local, locally-elected politicians. And it's interesting that, uh, Americans throughout the U.S., regardless of, uh, ethnic, uh, or gender, uh, background, overall approve of their local government more so than they do of their federal government. And it appears the more, um, the, the higher you go in the hierarchy, not necessarily reaching the president, but the higher you go in the hierarchy, the less confidence, uh, there is in their, in their, um, elected officials. So 47 degrees of those questions, questioned, agreed that their cities on the right track, and 32% disagreed. Uh, this trend is, uh, also consistent with comparing the performance of their, of their mayors, their city councilmen versus their statewide and federal representatives. So I don't know if you take comfort in that. I don't think we should rest on our laurels or take, take personal credit for it, but I think that's a result of, uh, a, a more direct, direct contact, a, a direct relationship between the voters and their local representatives, because I think for, for our residents and for American people in general, the buck stops with us, because they can come to us, we can be here, present, looking at each other at a city council meeting, and if there's any unhappiness about any issue, you really don't get to express that directly to your, uh, congressman or even your state representatives. Uh, another, um, seminar concentrated on, uh, jobs and, and what the situation with job creation is in the U.S., and what really caught my interest was the emphasis that Secretary of Labor, Thomas Perez, uh, emphasized in terms of apprenticeships and summer job programs as, uh, platforms for, uh, an alternative to college, but nevertheless, a career that can be lucrative and can provide a, uh, high quality of life for, for those who choose that path. And the point that was made is that somehow in, sometime in the 60s and 70s, U.S. moved away from the entire apprenticeship, uh, model and moved directly towards, you know, either you go through the college route, or you're, you're going to be a blue-collar worker for the rest of your life. Well, that's not necessarily the choice, as the experience in Western Europe and Asia has proven. And that's an area of concentrate, concentration for our secretary, creating those, those, uh, individuals with those skills that can fill the manufacturing jobs and at the, at the same time not necessarily have to either be confined to a blue-collar job or have to go to college in order to, to have a job in this country. Housing and community development, the Secretary of the HUD, Julian Castro, talked about Section 8, low-income senior housing. A lot of emphasis was put on veteran housing and the federal government's goal of eliminating, uh, veteran homelessness throughout the United States. So that's very welcomed. I think our city has shown, certainly shown a commitment to, uh, I don't know if we want to quote, eliminating, but certainly tackling the issue of veteran homelessness, as was demonstrated by, uh, 17-unit, no, I'm sorry, 16-unit building which we, uh, refurbished last year and is fully occupied as of probably six months ago, and the Veterans Village, which, uh, is about to go online very soon. We're very proud of it. In terms of transportation, again, the, uh, emphasis was both in optimizing and, uh, renewing, modernizing our port facilities and our infrastructure in order to make products more cost-efficient in the United States, those products that are actually manufactured there. But also concentrating on, uh, increasing the culture of pedestrian and cyclist, uh, commuting. I think that's something that's constantly on the agenda in the city of Glendale, and we struggle with all the same issues that the rest of America does. Surely there are pockets, there are municipalities that perhaps are newer than Glendale, or the infrastructure was at the get-go intended to support that kind of, uh, a culture, but nevertheless, uh, I'll, I'll point out that the Secretary of Transportation stated that last year, overall, in all of the United States, there was a 16% increase in pedestrian deaths from traffic accidents and 15% increase in cyclist deaths as a result of accidents. So a lot of things that we're seeing in Glendale are not really unique in Glendale, so I, I do take exception with all these ridiculous reports out there that somehow Glendale is the worst, you know, worst commuter city in, in county or whatever, whatever they're saying. This trend is uniform throughout the United States, and, uh, I think it may be a result of our desire to promote a certain lifestyle, lifestyle not corresponding to the infrastructure, which has to support that specific lifestyle. Finally, um, all these panels, and there were, probably two or three dozen of them, were reinforced by the White House, uh, at the, uh, reception by the President, which was organized for the mayors. And, um, I'm very impressed by the fact that, uh, the President's office is intended to go full force for the next two years, so there's not going to be any let, let off on, um, the amount of energy that's being exerted, uh, to make things better in our country. Um, that's about it. The literature I will turn over to our, um, administrators, to our management services if anyone wants to, uh, go through them and, uh, learn the facts, they're all there. On Sunday, January 25th, I had the opportunity to attend the Armenian Sisters Academy, Academy's 30th anniversary, that's a Catholic Armenian school located in, in La Cremona Monro's area, and a school that's dedicated to education, but specifically to spiritual education, academic education. And, uh, I wish them all the best, they're doing a fantastic job, uh, as is evident by the successful event which they held on Sunday. And those are all my comments. Mr. Clerk, may we have the next item, please?
Next item is community event announcements.
There are no cards, so no one has submitted any.
Following that, the next item on the agenda, under 8A, is Director of Public Works regarding update on state road 710 North, EIR/ EIS study and the status of proposed 710 freeway extension. AD1 is a motion to direct city manager to formally join a new community-based transportation coalition and commit staff time and other resources to this endeavor.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. As, uh, our Public Works Manager Shay Eckleston-Bommer comes to the podium, I will just set the stage by way of reminding the council that a couple of months ago, this matter came before, uh, this body, and the discussion revolved around this evolution of our affiliation with several other cities in the region as the study of the 710 freeway project, uh, the freeway extension was discussed. Um, as you were advised at that time, we are today part of the Five City Alliance, made up of the city of Glendale, city of Pasadena, city of South Pasadena, city of, uh, La Canada Flint Ridge, and I'm missing one, am I not Shay? Or is that all of them?
Sierra Madre.
Sierra Madre, that's the other one. And so, uh, we have been dedicated as that Five City Alliance to focusing strictly on education as opposed to advocacy, uh, in, in the context of evaluating reports and information pertaining to the 710 freeway. Uh, since that time, since our joining the Five City Alliance, spearheaded by La Canada Flint Ridge and South Pass, uh, a new group, uh, referring to itself as a New Community-Based Transportation Coalition, has emerged, and the idea there is that this group, uh, would be, uh, entire, not entirely, but would be, uh, uh, very comfortable and focusing on advocacy as well as, uh, the, uh, the straight, uh, look at education, information, evaluation that had been the purpose of the Five City Alliance. At that time, city council advised, uh, that we, as a body, you were not prepared to move in the direction of the new Community-Based Transportation Coalition and engage in advocacy by way of the expenditure of resources, uh, staff time or money. Uh, since that meeting, however, council has asked that the matter come back for reconsideration, and at this point, we are here before you to either answer any questions about this evolution from the Five City Alliance to the New Community-Based Transportation Coalition, um, what our participation in that group might mean, and certainly to take whatever direction that, uh, the city council would provide to us. Shay, I don't know if I left anything out there, but you tell me.
Uh, you covered a lot of my presentation.
So let me, let me ask a question. The EIR has not come out, right? It's, it's about to come out in February?
Uh, correct. The EIR has not yet been released, but according to Metro, it is on schedule to be released in February.
So why are we bringing this issue now when EIR will be out in February and we can address it then?
The discussion, uh, previously, and, and really the, the difference between the Five City Alliance and the Coalition, well abbreviated as such, uh, was that the Five City Alliance would study the EIR strictly from the, the paradigm of, uh, the objective information education, as opposed to advocating for one position or another, or even offering additional alternatives. Uh, as Mr. Najarian had pointed out previously, there are other cities on the opposite side of, uh, the, uh, of the issue, uh, in the San Gabriel Valley that are already taking advocacy positions, um, with respect to the extension of the freeway. And that is happening now, again, even before the EIR is released.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I might add, that it was upon my request that we brought this back. Uh, when this, um, issue came before council a couple of months ago, um, staff kind of indicated that the cost would be like $250,000, and I really didn't think that was fiscally responsible, that we spend that much money, uh, until the EIR came out. And I subsequently have had conversations with management, and we have staff, we have resources, but it's not going to be nearly that much money. Uh, so I feel that, that we needed to revisit this, uh, this advocacy, and, uh, since I am, uh, totally against the tunnel, uh, I think that, uh, perhaps, uh, we should revisit and, uh, and, uh, take another vote.
Okay. Do you have any speakers?
Yeah, we have speakers and, uh, apparently there are no questions for you. Lucky you. So, um, we'll start with Bill Wiseman, followed by Susan Bollin. And I'll ask him how. Mr. Wiseman, how much time do you need?
Um, four minutes?
Sure, five minutes, here we go.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman from beautiful Far North Glendale, and, uh, because of the subject matter tonight, I'll mention a couple of other affiliations that I have as reasons for why I'm up here. I am currently Vice Chair of the Metro Citizens Advisory Committee, and I also represent the city of Glendale on the SR 710 Stakeholders Outreach Advisory Committee, which is another Metro Committee. When we have major problems in transportation, uh, to deal with, and we need to come up solution, with solutions to those problems, and here the problem is specifically the traffic congestion in the West San Gabriel Valley, um, it really behooves policymakers to, uh, undergo a process where, um, a number of possible solutions are considered and discussed and debated, and from that process, the best, uh, solution to the transportation problem, uh, should emerge. Now, what has been happening in the case of the State Route 710 extension is the exact opposite of that. A number of people got together at the USC Keston Institute, uh, back in 2007, and I have passed out a document, I think Councilman Najarian has already seen it, but maybe some of the other council members have not, that describes, uh, what is essentially a blueprint for what we are seeing coming at us with the draft EIR that is going to be released next month. What we have here are, uh, a group of What we have here are a group of people with representatives from SCAG, representatives from local governments in the San Gabriel Valley, representatives from Caltrans, representatives from ACS Dragados, the Spanish construction and tunneling company, representatives from firms that are hired guns for tunnel advocates, representatives from the Southern California Association of Governments that are tunnel advocates. And if you read through this document, you'll see that what was being proposed back in 2007 was a highway tunnel along the Meridian Route, the direct connection between the stub of the 210 and where the 134 and, excuse me, 710, and the 134 and 210 come together in Pasadena. And as you will also see, if you peruse this document, it is mentioned several times that really, the primary purpose of this tunnel facility is to facilitate goods movement. Now, reducing congestion is sort of mentioned as an aside, but it's primarily about goods movement from the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach. And several of the other groups that were involved in this planning meeting back in 2007 were representatives from Wall Street firms that invest in infrastructure, they buy airports and bridges and tunnels as part of public-private partnerships, where they can derive a revenue stream from the leasing or the tolling of that facility. And it was, in a way, putting the cart before the horse. Yeah, we've got this big transportation problem we need to solve, but the way to do it is not to go straight to a particular solution and advocate for that solution, and treat every other possible solution just as, as window dressing, that's only up there to give the illusion that there is a robust process going ahead to choose the preferred alternative. Now, when that EIR comes out next month, I will bet you dollars to donuts that the preferred alternative is going to be a highway tunnel on the Meridian Route, and it's going to be an issue where all of the environmental risk is undertaken by the public, and all of the profit will go to whatever private entity ends up with the contract to operate and toll the tunnel. So, I believe the city of Glendale, in the face of this sort of predetermined solution to this problem, needs to take a very careful and a very active role in making sure that we don't get railroaded into a solution that has already been predetermined by a number of the major players who have a stake in seeing it come out their way. And instead, we have a robust process where the city is going to be heavily involved in terms of making sure that we respond to the EIR appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Susan Boland, followed by Sherri Stubbs.
Hello, thank you for bringing this back for consideration. My name is Susan Boland, and I am a member of the No 710 Action Committee. I'm also President of Far North Glendale Homeowners Association. One of my principal jobs as being on the No 710 Action Committee is to be one of the principal writers on our website, no710.com. And the goal of the website is to inform and explain the project to the public at large, and we try to take a very neutral position, presenting the information, the documents, the reports, the, the material that we pour through on a daily basis, and put it out there and say, what do you think, to the public? We try to be neutral as far as which options could work, but we are pretty opposed to the tunnel. You can go there for information. Bill Weisman explained about the whole predetermined. We have many, many documents pointing to that it is designed for goods movement, and the tunnel is predetermined. So, if you look there, or if you look at the notebooks that I provided to the Council, many of our documents explaining that are there. When you're thinking about transportation, and you're looking at the region as a whole, it's really important, it's vitally critical, that you look at a multimodal solution. When you think of a freeway tunnel, it's so complicated, expensive, there's safety issues, there's so many things, and it's very 20th century. So, if we're in keeping with that group of young students that came in here with their phones, we want to look for transit opportunities, but a multimodal approach, you know, connectivity between areas. So, what we could do is consider, instead of building an upwards of $5 billion tunnel, we consider maybe smaller projects. Certainly, we're looking towards connecting the San Gabriel Valley all the way to the West San Fernando Valley, by way of the Gold Line and Bob Hope Airport, that's certainly within the realm of $6 million project, as opposed to upwards of $6 billion project. So, I would ask you to consider that, and I urge you to join the New Community-Based Transportation Coalition and approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherri Stubbs.
My name is Sherri Stubbs, Far North Glendale. I noted Councilwoman Devine's saying that the city received an A grade for the air quality as it relates to the lungs. With the extension of the 710 by way of a tunnel, no way the grade would be lost. And as far as Mayor Sanayan's concerns, we need to be proactive. Waiting for the EIR results would put us totally behind the eight ball, while the supporters of the tunnel are already out there advocating their position. There's no time to go into the negative details of the proposed 710 tunnel extension. Suffice to say, the issue is critical to the residents of Glendale, and particularly Far North Glendale. We cannot stress enough the importance of the city's participation in this effort. We urge you to support the motion and commit the necessary staff time and other resources necessary to ensure the success of the endeavor to preserve and protect the city's residents' quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stubbs. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
Well, I voted for this the last time it came around, and I'm glad to see it back again, so that we have a second bite at the apple, and thank you very much, Councilmember Devine, for bringing it back. I agree with everything that the Speaker said, and I'll just give you a little anecdote. A couple of months back, I was at the League of California Cities Conference, which was here in Los Angeles, but there were people from all across the state at this conference, and the incoming president got up and in his speech touted the tunnel as a project that the cities were all looking forward to. So, that's what we're up against. We're up against a group of cities that are very organized and very mobilized to make the tunnel happen. Now, the $9 billion, is that just for the tunnel, Mr. Najarian, or is that for the whole new highway? Do you know?
That is not even the full cost of the tunnel.
Of the tunnel alone. So, let's say the highway extension and the tunnel, because it's not just a tunnel, you also have to build all that other highway, is $10 billion? More, $12 billion?
One estimate is at $15 billion.
So, let's say $15 billion. And as you said, this is, they're not doing this for passenger cars and for commuters. The goal behind this is moving freight from the Port of Long Beach north, which is a laudable goal, but what would $15 billion north due to our rail system to bring the freight out of the Port of Long Beach and send it north by rail? What would it do to public transportation for those commuters in, in Los Angeles, which is so desperately in need of a rigorous public transportation system, and is only now limpingly getting out of the gate? I would argue that that money is much better spent on a robust public transportation system and rail system to move freight from Long Beach, not in single trucks, thousands of individual diesel-powered trucks, but on rail, which now, even though a lot of rail is dirty, but now there are clean rail systems, and there's a lot of opportunity for doing cleaner rail and, and doing rail. So, this council has come out in, as a resolution opposing the tunnel, and it's only fitting that we are as vocal advocates as we can be to advocate for that position. So, I'm definitely in support of joining this, I'm supportive, in support of spending money to advocate and educate, or I'd say educate, I don't know that we can advocate. Maybe we can, since we passed a resolution. I think we actually can, yes. City Attorney's nodding. So, I do think we should spend resources, money, staff time, whatever we need, because besides it being an unfiscally responsible, an irresponsible program fiscally, and being, as you said, a 20th century solution for a 21st century problem, the effect on the quality of life in the Cressena Valley, if this happens, will be tremendous, tremendous. And the deck is stacked against the Cressena Valley, because the EIR is going to reflect what the policymakers have decided many years ago, some policymakers have decided many years ago, which is to build this tunnel. So, I agree with this, I agree with spending resources, staff time, I will support any of that whenever it comes to this dais. Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else? Mr. Weaver?
Well, I'll just reiterate my position, and I hope people listen clearly to what I'm saying. Don't walk out of here without clearly listening to what I'm saying. My position has not changed. I'm a civil engineer during my profession, in the years, took transportation classes. I reviewed, as a project manager, I viewed hundreds of environmental documents, going from one, the first one I ever handled in 1970, environmental document was 15 pages long, including the table appendix and the, and the photographs. Come a long way on environmental documents. And I had to do those in conjunction with projects. An environmental document tells you a range of alternatives, mitigation impacts, ones that cannot be mitigated for, it tells you what mitigation measures can be taken for every alternative. All of that has to come out in a environmental report. I seem to hear that people think that the environmental report will be tainted. I don't know that. But in my career, I had to look at environmental documents to see if I, and read them, to see if, what position I could take. I cannot sit here and say no to the tunnel, or yes to the tunnel, or for an alternative. I don't know the impacts yet. Until I see the document and review it, and it'll be big, it'll take time to review it. And I know that I've seen many environmental document, draft review periods be extended because of the amount of review that will go on, and especially on this one. There will be a lot of input. Now, when all of that is said and done, a final environmental impact report will be issued, after it incorporates all the comments of everybody. That'll be turned over to the lead agency, which I assume is Caltrans. Caltrans will then make the decision on which project is going forward. So, I'm saying, until I see the environmental document, I can't say yes or no to any alternative. Although, I can have opinions, but I don't have the facts. Yes, I know there's a lot of studies and stuff out there that indicate that it was prejudged and prearranged, maybe, maybe not. But until I see the document, I can't take any position. So, I don't want anybody going out of here, this could be, and I'm in an election cycle, I don't want people going out and saying Weaver's wants the tunnel. I am not saying that, because give me a chance to look at the document and review it, then state my position, and why I'm stating my position. I think that's only fair in a democracy. So, I hope, I don't get out there and hear people throwing at me, why are you for a tunnel? Because I am not saying that here today. I don't know how to say it any clearer than I've said it. So, I will vote no, I'm not going to spend more money until I know what the document says.
I think you were pretty clear, Mr. Weaver.
I hope so, because I know what I'm going to hear out there.
Yeah.
I just want to thank the speakers for coming tonight, because I have been opposed to the tunnel, but you have reinforced my decision to bring it back tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Devine?
I may?
Sure.
I don't know how you can be for the tunnel, Mr. Weaver, because if you're not against the tunnel, you're for the tunnel.
Oh, don't, you're an attorney, don't start putting words in my mouth. Gosh.
I'm somewhat facetious. I'm being somewhat facetious, but let's clear up the air on what the EIR is and what the EIR isn't.
Oh, please tell me.
In, in most cases, the EIR is supposed to be a neutral, unbiased study of the environmental factors that go into a particular project and evaluates certain other alternatives. Now, I say that the EIR is biased, I'm going to tell you that the EIR is junk before it even comes out. How can you say that, Mr. Najarian? The EIR is our Bible. Well, let me tell you, and let me give you just two facts about this. This EIR was supposed to be out about six months ago, maybe even a little longer, about nine months ago, around July of last, last year. All of a sudden, the organization that we call SCAG said, oh, no, you can't put that EIR out, we have new traffic data that we'd like to submit for analysis, new traffic data. This is what SCAG tells us. Well, on July 10th, on the streets of Alhambra, July 10th is 710 Day, get it? Alhambra has a big party with balloons. On July 10th, on the streets of Alhambra, the head of SCAG that's supplying the traffic data to the EIR, that we've put the brakes on the EIR for, till they get this traffic data in, stands before a podium, before a microphone, before the cameras, and says that this tunnel has to be built. This man's organization is providing the traffic data to the EIR. Now, anyone who has a bone of fair play in their body will say, well, that's got to be junk then. How in the world can the agency that's providing the traffic data, supposedly unbiased, to the EIR consultant, have its executive director stand before the world and say, this tunnel has to be built? End of story. That EIR is junk. It's not going to be worth the paper, the reams and reams of paper that it's printed on. That's all we need to hear. If anyone can argue that that information, that data provided by SCAG, for which their executive director advocates the tunnel to be built, is unbiased, doesn't know what the word bias means, because it's biased, and it's flawed, and it's faulty. I'm very happy to be leading the New Community-Based Transportation Coalition, because we are going to come at those tunnel people like they've never seen it before. There are things that I can't tell you, but I can assure you that the support to fight this tunnel is not just in the cities, the five-city region, it's not just in Southern California, but it's going nationwide. And I will be happy to stand with my colleagues, fighting that tunnel before the nationwide press conference that we're going to have, exposing the severe and deep flaws that this tunnel is going to bring upon the region, the air quality that's going to deteriorate to cancer-causing levels, the traffic that's going to be caused to level of F or worse levels, the money, the $15 billion. I don't think people realize what $15 billion can do. You could build about five different light rail lines back and forth throughout this county with the money that's going to go into this tunnel. And God forbid, they don't have one of those weekly semi-accidents that we hear about every week on our freeways, where the semi crashes and the semi burns, because pray to God that you're not anywhere near that tunnel. Pray to God that you're not within three miles of that, because that tunnel's going to fill up with caustic smoke. If you're within about 100 yards, you're going to be incinerated. They won't ask you if you want to be buried, because the decision is already made, you're going to be cremated. So, don't let anybody tell you. So don't let anybody tell you that the tunnel is a possibility and a viable alternative, except for those foolish, foolish cities of Alhambra and Monterey Park, who are looking out for their own best interests, those backward-thinking folks who don't know what's right for their community or the region. This is a battle that we are going to win. This is a battle that I implore all the young people out there, and everyone who wants to be on the right side of an argument and the right side of a fight, to come and join us. And we will proudly dedicate a light rail line or another sustainable form of transportation in the near future, that'll be paid for. And you can say to yourselves, I did the right thing, and I created a future for my children and their children. And this is the way it's going to play out, folks. And this is something I'm very passionate about, if you haven't noticed. I am not going to fight until we solve this problem the right way. So I'm very happy that at least three of my colleagues have stated that they're willing to support and join this group. We are going to win this battle. We are going to win it, and we're going to be proud that we won it. And if you're interested in joining, go to Susan Boland's website, the No On 7/10 Committee. This is going to be something you can tell your children about, that you fought for, and you won, and you made Southern California a better place for it.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. One would think you're running for office. I'll state my position very briefly, because I think I stated it before. I need to see the EIR. I need to see the EIR as to how it impacts all of Glendale. I need to see how it impacts South Glendale, how it's going to impact the five freeway, which has turned into a nightmare. I need to get the complete picture in order to understand how the residents of our entire city are going to be impacted. I'm not for the tunnel, but I'm not ready to be against the tunnel. And one and the other are the same thing. They're not the same thing. Despite what you say, they're not the same. So I'm willing to wait for the EIR to come out. I have confidence in our staff. I'm willing to dedicate, buy the city funds to analyze that EIR in an unbiased manner, so that we can make an educated decision as to what we're going to do with this issue, which is a very complicated issue. It's not a simple issue. But to allocate funds, as one of my colleagues put it before, may turn out to be a solution in search of a problem. So I'd like to wait, I'd like to ask our city manager how much, what the range is of how much this is going to cost for the city of Glendale. And I'm asking for a range, because it sounds like we don't know.
It is somewhat open-ended, depending on where it goes. Right now, we have put forth $50,000 to the, to the Five-City Coalition for study and information and education.
But we're not talking about a study here, right? We're talking about taking a position and advocating that.
Well, that's, that's the coalition. The coalition's separate and distinct from the Five-City Alliance.
Okay.
So Five-City Alliance, education, information, we have already pledged resources, staff, and money to the alliance. The coalition, at this point, is about $5,000 per city, maybe a bit more, to get us through the evaluation of different alternatives. Now, you ask for a range, so the ante into that particular game could be another $10,000, $5,000 to $10,000 for us. And if we play it all the way out, if the council were to engage in litigation, for example, and go all the way down that axis, then you could get to a full $250,000 range of costs that's shared. The city of South Pasadena has spent many, many, many thousands of dollars fighting this for the last 40 years. So when you ask for a range, it could be anywhere from a little bit to a lot, but the good news is, as a policymaking body, you get to say how long you want to stay in for. And so as you stand right now, what we had presented to you last fall was, would you want to lend the city's moral authority, good name, staff resources to the coalition, without allocating actual dollars to it, but rather the staff resources and the ability to support Mr. Najarian, as he is the chair of the coalition? Or would you like to put some limited amount of money towards it, or not? Or stay strictly with the alliance? And at the last discussion, I think the, the timing of the EIR weighed heavy on the minds of council members, and we opted to stay only with the alliance. Councilmember Devine had asked for reconsideration. That was granted, and now here we are. So really, you have, in terms of a range, is it status quo? Is it staff resources and the moral authority of the city of Glendale? Or is it all of those things plus money to be involved in the coalition? And that's really the decision before you.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd also like to study this financial planning charrette with Jump Scene for the first time. So with that, unless any of my colleagues have anything else to add, we'll take a vote? Oh, we need a, I guess, a motion.
I'll move it. But, but I just, I mean, your, your comment about it, it sounds like I'm running for office.
How was it just?
I can assure you that whether I run or not, this is something I feel deeply, deeply committed to. So I know some, some folks pick up an item before elections and jump all over it, but I have been, that's not the case with me. I'm, I feel very passionate about it.
And you've been passionate about it for a long time, admittedly so.
So I will move 8A1.
Second.
May, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Sonian?
No.
Thank you. Whoever one who came on this item.
Next item, AB, 8B.
8B is Director of Human Resources regarding workers' compensation alternative dispute resolution program. B1 is the resolution approving and adopting an agreement between the city of Glendale and, city and Glendale Police Officers Association.
One of the major points of emphasis, as you know, in this year's strategic goals for both police and fire, is to reduce the amount of time that officers, that sworn personnel are out on extended, actually, all personnel are out on extended workers' comp claims and disability claims. One of the ways that our Department of Human Resources and our workers' comp teams, working alongside the police department management, has been to identify, to make a modification to the current system of having AMEs or QMEs, the approved medical examiner, or qualified medical examiner, to effectively parse out some disagreements as they pertain to workplace injuries. What is before you here, and Mr. Doyle can answer any questions that you might have, is the, the negotiated resolution of some of these questions with our GPOA bargaining group, such that we are putting forth an IME, independent medical examiner. Basically, we are working with currently 23 of what could be 25 medical professionals in a variety of fields, that we can defer some of these judgments to and allow the, the IMEs to effectively adjudicate the, the outcomes of some of these extended claims. We hope that, as we've seen in other cities, as we evaluated this particular option, that we can have a dramatic decrease in the amount of time that personnel are off due to workers' comp-related injuries. With that, I would certainly have you ask any questions of Mr. Doyle or his staff who are here.
Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as Mr. Ochoa said, this is a proposal being put forth, really to accelerate our, our workers' compensation process, to kind of get, get out from the very delay-ridden process that's mandated by state law, and sort of work around it as sort of a bypass. Section 3201.7 of the Labor Code does allow for this type of a program, which would enable the city to contract with any of our employee bargaining groups, and to put together an agreement to, to speed these cases along. In this case, what we've done is identified, we're hoping to get around 25 physicians to participate in this program. We, we ended up with about 23, but we can certainly add some more. And these are doctors in a variety of different specialty areas, who will agree to take on our cases, and really move the process along faster. Instead of taking four to six months to adjudicate some of these claims, we do it in a matter of, hopefully, less than two months. Essentially, these doctors are going to agree to schedule appointments within 30 days, and to have the medical reports done within 30 days. And as I said earlier, it, it will hopefully take a process that's taking multiple months and tighten it up into, hopefully, weeks. It's, it's, should be obvious as to why it's good to get our officers back, both healed, repaired, back to work in as, as quickly a time as possible. Aside from the, the costs of an officer being out, we have to backfill for that person. Oftentimes, the backfill is at overtime, and there's Labor Code 4850 costs, which essentially enable sworn personnel to be out up to a year for a valid, you know, work-related injury. We help to speed these things along. And really, I think the, the biggest component of this, and I think this was why the GPOA brought this to us, was really to make sure our officers are taken care of in a more rapid manner, so they can get the, see the doctor they need to see, get the treatment they need to see, and the medical care in, you know, as timely a manner as possible, rather than waiting at home for some type of approval or some type of a medical report. Again, it's, it's, it's become a morale problem. It's, it's not good for anybody. So anyway, we're very optimistic about this program. It hasn't been tried in a lot of places yet, but we do see it as, as something that I think would be really key in helping to reduce our workers' compensation costs. I do want to commend the GPOA that are represented here. Officer Mike Wenz is here, and their legal counsel, Mr. John Ferron, who's sort of worked with us in putting this together. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Yes. Mr. Weaver?
I'm just going to move 8B1, because it is potentially a big cost savings to the city. Like they said about the police, out, they have to cover. It's just raised, the cost's just going up and up. This can cut it down to a two-month period. City saves, the city saves a lot of money. So I can't say anything without, doesn't hurt to try it.
Absolutely.
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sonian?
Yes. Thank you.
And next item.
Next item, and, well, item 8C has been moved.
Right.
9A, and I should remind anyone in the audience and watching at home, 9B has also been moved to date certain. Under 9A, though, Director of Economic Development, we have regarding suspended activities and not-to-leve assessments within Adam Square Business Improvement District. 9A1 is the resolution confirming intention to modify activities and suspending assessments for 2015.
Yes.
I'll move it. We heard this before.
This is the actual hearing.
It's a hearing.
You have to open the hearing.
Open and close.
I, I'd actually like to ask a question about it.
You would?
So, Mr. Ochoa, other than, I mean, we've done this before, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're not really questioning.
And, and they continuously need our support, which I think we're about to give them. But are we doing something more to help them?
We've done a lot. I helped, I helped create that business improvement district down there. It's small, it's a block, block and a half long, it's hard to get good retailers to come in there. They've done events, but they're just not having a lot of success building a feasible business improvement district like Montrose or downtown.
So that's my question.
Yeah.
As we discussed, yes.
Or that we can do.
Well, we've tried. I used to go to all the meetings.
We're hopeful, sir, that there will be more than we can do. As you know, Measure O, the, the TOT increase, is a general, would be a general tax, goes to the general fund. But in the general fund, the city council has the opportunity to allocate those resources towards economic development. So to the extent that there is no more redevelopment, economic development has collapsed back into the general fund. If we can cede our economic development efforts with new revenues, because all the existing revenues are spoken for by current departments, theoretically, ideally, what you would do during the budget is allocate economic development dollars back towards independent BIDs like Adam Square. And if you are able to go back to those businesses and offer to leverage with them, as we have in the past, and maybe you leverage them even on a two-to-one basis, or even a three-to-one basis, money that they raise on themselves through the BID with funds that are coming from the city to do economic development, marketing, and promotions.
Okay.
Then I think that's when we turn that corner. But it doesn't seem to, to make too much sense to the businesses, as Mr. Weaver indicated, to ask them for what'll amount to a very small amount of money, if that's the only money that exists. If we can bring resources to them, then I think we can leverage, make them part of that solution.
Okay. So what I hear you saying indirectly is that, once there's money, we, we had no money to throw at the problem.
Not today, we don't.
In a way, yeah.
We're not killing.
So we haven't really planned out, we don't have a targeted attack plan for how to promote the district. And once the money is available, then we will go about figuring out how we can help.
It is a BID. That's not going away. It's just.
No, I, I realize that, but I mean, just it being a BID, and every year, us, you know, doing away with the assessment, I don't think is a fundamental solution. I'm saying let's come up with a fundamental solution.
And I think that fundamental solution, sir, is, is the South Glendale Community Plan, which Mr. Landsafame will tell you, now has an economic development element to it, that we would really begin to focus on these independent BIDs as really kind of clusters and hubs scattered throughout the, the city, in kind of a village almost, where you have Adam Square, you have Kenneth Village, you have some of these other districts, that we can begin to prop up and help, so they become self-sustaining. That really is the overarching strategy.
And I'm hoping that this plan will deal with individual neighborhoods and areas that are very particular and very different from one another.
Yes, sir.
In a, in an individual manner.
Yes, sir. That draft of, of the South Glendale Plan, as you know, is one of our strategic goals for community development this year.
Okay.
Right. And so this action specifically just suspends the collection of the dues, rather than canceling the BID.
Yeah, not canceling anything.
Until such time as, as you guys just mentioned.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Did you open the hearing?
We opened and closed it.
Open, I'll move 9A1.
Second.
Let's have the roll call, please.
Members Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sonian?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, at the conclusion of all business, will be oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item's not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm going to take Don Margolin first, followed by Mike Moyle. Mr. Margolin, we have your little flyer with the survey of rack prices in different municipalities. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. First thing I'll bring up, I've been living in Glendale since 1970, off and on. I currently live in Verdugo Woodlands. I own a home there. This flag idea is fabulous, because a lot of the pedestrians were all black, and those flashing yellow lights are confusing sometimes, because sometimes they're to give, there are different reasons for them, but the flags, when you're waving that flag, it's, something's going on, and we got to have caution. I just hope that we have a good conscience, and we put them on the other side and not take them anywhere, because that will defeat the whole thing. Our conscience needs to be our guide. Okay, the news racks currently in Pasadena, or Glendale, excuse me, $52 a year, we were paying last year. To be increased to $241, which is a 400% increase. Now, if our properties were increased 400%, we'd be really, really happy, because that's a lot of money we would all have when we owned property. If you look at Santa Monica, they charge $82.79. Culver City is $50. Hawthorne is $35. Los Angeles is $21.69. Burbank is $20. South Pasadena is $20. West Hollywood is $20. Hermosa Beach is $20. Pasadena, next door, $11.42. And I also work for the Pasadena Weekly, I'm the distributor. Torrance, it's $220 for unlimited news racks. El Segundo, $101.66, unlimited news racks. Beverly Hills, which is interesting, they don't charge anything. No charge in Beverly Hills. Redondo Beach, no charge. I think going up 400% is not reasonable, it's not fair. And I think Glendale's a fair city, and I don't know if we want to go up this much money at this time. I'm sure that... I'm sure that the city monitors the news racks and makes sure that we keep them graffiti-free and not damaged, which the distributors do. But to charge this much money, it just doesn't seem right. So what should we do next? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Margolin.
Thank you.
It doesn't seem right. I have to agree and.
Staff will look at it.
I mean, there's this amount, $241, and I assume it's based on the expense or the cost associated with administering these racks?
Yes, sir.
I mean, what exactly, what functions are there associated with monitoring these racks?
If you recall from the budget adoption process and the cost study that was completed over this past year for the current fiscal year, the tasks that were studied were broken down into their elements in terms of pushing the paper from one end of a process to the other end of a process, to doing inspections and taking whatever steps needed to be taken to provide that level of service for a public benefit, all the way on a sliding scale to a private benefit, vice versa. We can only charge by law what the cost to provide the service is, not anything more than that. However, the city council has the authority to charge something less than the cost of providing that service. Oftentimes, city councils will charge the full cost of that service if there is entirely or mostly a private benefit versus an entirely public benefit, or to encourage or discourage certain activities. So if you wanted to make the argument that if we would agree that there is a cost for the process, and as I sit here, I don't have the cost study in front of me, but the cost to accept an application, review the application, I guess do a site inspection, we don't have a business license tax like, say, a Torrance does, so we're doing this on a kind of one-off basis and don't get an economy of scale because of that. But be that as it may, there is a process, and that process fully burdened so that the taxpayer is not subsidizing this process at all, that process costs $241 per rack. Now, if the council wanted to say it is in the public's interest that we do not charge the full cost of that entirely within your purview. You had asked me last time, can we change that? Can we reduce it? And I had said yes, and the city attorney corrected that you can do it pursuant to the cost study, pursuant to the revisiting of the cost study and resolution. You can indeed do that, but the idea, while the gentleman may disagree with what the cost is, the cost is going to be the cost, and we can't charge anything more than that, how much of that cost we recover is the policy decision you all get to make.
Okay. So if the cost is the cost, that means that all these cities are basically subsidizing these racks?
Absolutely. If you recall, before we did.
Different reasons, for the same reasons that we would look at this.
One way or another, if you recall from the discussion that we had last year, we had not done -- the first cost study we had done was in 2012. So it is something that's relatively new. That really is an outcropping of Prop 218 and Prop 26, which are relatively new propositions, additions to the state constitution. So my strong suspicion, while I don't know this, but I do think that there are a number of agencies that are on this list that haven't done a cost study, have charged these in the past, probably thinking, well, this is about what it costs. We guess. We've never really studied it. And because you don't have that, and if you don't have that cost study, you cannot charge anything much more than that. You have to be able to justify that cost. So the gentleman's question as to what might we do, similar to the item that was brought up by Councilwoman Friedman, is for the council to revisit it as part of the fee study that we do each year, or the consideration of fees and charges that we do each year. We try to do a fee study every three years, 2012 and going into the '15 fiscal year. That would be my best advice to you.
Okay. Very well. In that case, I'd like someone's support on this to agenda this item because for.
I mean, as part of the fee study discussion?
Yeah, well, yeah, sooner rather than later. When is the fee study discussion?
We do that as part of the mid -- or as part of the budget. If you wanted to revisit the entire topic at mid-year, we do that in February, but again, it's council's pleasure.
Yeah, I'd like to do it mid-year.
Just remember, one thing, Mr. Mayor, just remember the fees. How many different line items were there in those fees?
Well, I understand.
So I'd want to look at the whole fee structure again.
I think that one of the most important issues is how much revenue are we generating from this? We know? I mean.
Not as I sit here. No, I would.
It's a lot?
It's probably not. It becomes.
Are budgets going to be crippled?
No. It'll be a function of how much money you spend here relative to other things. Because Mr. Weaver starts, as he's indicating, I think it becomes a slippery slope. I'm not going to collect it here. I may not collect it somewhere else. I may not collect it somewhere else. But ultimately, again, that is entirely a council policy decision.
And I recognize that, and I'm willing to go on a limb and have a discussion about this, fellow council members.
What I want to try and articulate is there were hundreds of fee adjustments, and we couldn't go one by one by one. There was a couple that came in, people complained right at the time, and I think we enunciated that over the course of time, people would come in with one or two, like the dogs, too much, now this one too much.
Right.
But on a piece-mill business, there would come in and we would adjust.
The thing that the dogs and this has in common, and there are things that there are in common and there are things that there aren't, is that I don't think they generate that much revenue for the cities.
Oh, no, no. I'm not debating that.
It's not going to have a drastic impact on the budget. But I understand the reasoning for the dogs, and we'll talk about it, but this is about us somehow not being information-friendly or reading-friendly.
That's why we're going to look at it.
When it comes back, though, I would request that -- you made a very good point about us not having a business license tax, and many of these cities do, whether they're collecting money from LA Weekly, Pasadena Weekly, newspapers in general, through business taxes to operate in their city.
Certainly bring that information back.
So we need to know that, just to be, and, you know, it may be that the distributors don't even know that. It may be other ways they're collecting money or.
They may be paying it differently.
Certainly. That would be fair, and that would be the right thing to do.
There's less than five cities in Southern California that don't have a business license tax.
Agenda is this for February. Thank you. Next speaker is -- thank you, Mr. Margolin. Next speaker is Mike Moehl, followed by Andrew Caldwell.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Moehl. The last time I came before this council, after careful analysis, I came to the conclusion that although the fire union endorsed Mrs. Devine, they did not provide her with any PAC money for her or the fire or police unions. Mrs. Devine, for this, I do apologize. Two weeks ago, City Manager, Mr. Ochoa, stated $1.5 billion pension liability I was telling the public about was only half the story, and proceeded to say, quote, "There are considerable assets to balance that debt. I believe nearly $900 million in assets would offset that debt," end of quote. Mr. Ochoa, since when do assets cover debt liabilities? I always thought cash did that. You were using the assets of GWP, police and fire stations, parking lots, libraries, museums, et cetera, as collateral to pay the bloated salaries and pensions of our CalPERS union workforce. In 2000, we had over $500 million of unrestricted assets reserves, excuse me, unrestricted reserves. Taking on the watch of our two senior council members, Mr. Najarian and Mr. Weaver, that money has dwindled down to less than $40 million. Is it fair this money has been used to pay the unfunded, bloated salary and pension benefits of our public employees? Mr. Ochoa, is it your goal to sell the city assets and perpetuate this Ponzi scheme? As the city manager, it would have been more truthful to tell the public the city finances are upside down. Our city manager and Councilman Najarian keep telling the public how city employees continue to contribute more money towards their pensions. Councilman Najarian furthermore challenged me to find a more conservative city when it comes to pension planning. We can look at the city of Yorbelinda, who only a couple of years ago outsourced their police department to the county and saved over $3 million annually. Many police officers switched their badges and went to work for the county. Can we just imagine how much money the larger police force of Glendale could save by outsourcing to LA County Sheriff's Services? If the cities of La Cañada Flintridge, Malibu, Calabasas, and over 50% of the counties, 50% of the city, excuse me, in the county of Los Angeles, use county services to save money, why can't our dual city? We should phase out of CalPERS ASAP and place all future city employees on Social Security and a 401K plan. Fire and police officers should be outsourced to LA County. LA County Pension Plan, LACERA, is self-funded, and the taxpayers are not on the hook for their failed investments. Over 50% of the cities of LA County are using county services and not CalPERS. For the record, only, only cities that contract with CalPERS have filed for bankruptcy protection. Increases in public employees' contributions have been offset with the taxpayers picking up the higher cost of their salaries, pensions, overtime pay, Lexus medical plans, educational costs, bonuses, et cetera. Why under your 12-year watch, Councilman Najarian? Najarian have pension costs increased two and a half times. Councilman Najarian, you have illegally increased water and electric rates of GWP above the utility operational cost, and approved illegally transfer of millions of dollars from GWP into the pockets of our union workforce, a workforce, sir, that has contributed generously in PAC money for your elections. A clear conflict of interest. Why should the taxpayer guarantee the annual 7.5% rate of return investments of the employees' corrupt pension system, CalPERS? Our city manager tried to insult me recently when I mentioned outsourcing. He stated we should not replace Glendale police officers with a private security person. Our city manager knew exactly what I meant. Glendale's finest police officers are trained and hired from LA County and Orange County Sheriff Training Schools. Mr. Ochoa and Mr. Najarian are perpetuating a Ponzi game. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moehl.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I will not, as long as I'm on this council. It's only been 10 years, Mr. Moehl. I will not seek to fire the officers of the Glendale Police Department. And that's more, that's not the first time you've asked us to do that. And I wonder if there might be some sort of vendetta that you have against the police department.
Good night, Mr. Moehl.
I hope that's not the case. I hope this isn't a personal issue between you and the police.
Might as well stop. He left.
This is for the folks at home.
Audience sees he walked out.
But I will not, I'm very proud, we're all, we're all on this dais, very proud of our police department and our public safety officers. And needless to say, if I can speak for all of you, there's no way we're going to fire our police department and our fire department.
This is the first time I've heard him use a Ponzi scheme the city is using. That's a new.
I think he said Ponzi scheme, not Fonzie scheme.
Ponzie?
Ponzie.
Pyramid.
Not Henry Winkler.
Well.
Ponzie?
Last I checked, though, the LA County Sheriff's were needing public employees with a pension.
My ears are going with age.
Funded by taxpayers.
Okay, folks, one more speaker, Andrew Caldwell.
It's getting late, too. Oh, that's what they all stayed for.
Oh, what a presentation.
Is it okay if I present just some?
Certainly, of course.
Some bits here? Okay. So this is, I presented this from the Nextdoor website. It's a community social media network. I posted on last week about a problem with street racing. First of all, thank you for having me, and thank you for this opportunity, members of the council. So I live on Highland Avenue, and I'm here with, oh, you guys have moved, some of my neighbors. There's about seven of us here. There were eight, but one had to leave. And I'd like to draw your attention to the problem of speeding, which has been covered a lot tonight in this meeting, and it's been pretty illuminating. We have a real problem on Highland Avenue with traffic, especially since Keppel School, which Mayor Sinanian, I know two of your kids go attend that. Since it's become such a popular school, we have a lot of traffic moving through there. And there's a lot of people driving at very unsafe speeds. So this is, this is what it looks like in the morning. You've got a lot of kids going up with their parents, and some of them are by themselves, and they're walking to school. And, you know, you've got your typical morning traffic. Can you mute the sound, actually? On the audio, yeah. So this is a cross street here. It's called Tenoni, and that's going up the street on Highland. This is about 7:40 in the morning. I took this on Thursday. You know, we, I take my dog out every morning, take her for a walk, and I meet up with some of our neighbors, and we've been meaning to come in here and talk, you know, get some attention. You know, we've just got a lot of people moving in and around. Everyone's rushing around, trying to get to school, get their kids to school. You know, in their haste, sometimes they, you know, pull maneuvers like this, reversing around a corner, and you can see that there's a, you know, there's kind of a problem with this intersection. There's, it's a blind intersection. Cars have to pull out, kind of look both ways. And, you know, so far, we haven't really seen any major accidents, but I think it's only a matter of time before somebody gets hit, somebody gets killed or injured.
Is there a stop sign there?
There's no, there's a stop sign on Tenoni, but there's no stop sign on Highland. So, and the speed limit's 30 miles an hour. So, you know, people do U-turns and, I mean, I believe that's a legal U-turn. I'm not sure. Officer Conley might have to weigh in on that, but so this is what we're up against. And one of, this is one of our neighbors, Jeff, and he's trying, you know, he's in a hurry, so he's trying to cross. This is a legal crossing because it's a break in the, in the street, and so he's got his son there, and he's, you know, dodging traffic to get over there. It's challenging, you know? It presents a problem.
Is that a T-intersection?
A T-intersection? Yeah, yeah. So we would like to propose that, and I've already submitted this to the Planning Commission, and I have yet to hear back, but we'd like to propose a three-way stop sign at Tenoni and Highland. We'd like to, for you guys to consider lowering the speed limit from 30 to 25. Californ, I guess there's a California law that states that you have the, within 1,000 feet of a school, you can lower the speed limit. Right now, it's 30 miles an hour, which seems a bit high, considering it's only a block away from three schools. Also, a speed feedback sign would be awesome. It's, you know, I've done a lot of reading, and you guys probably know a lot more about this than I do, but it seems to be pretty effective in slowing the casual speeder down. And also, something I was reading about was bike lane striping. It would narrow the street and make people drive a little bit more cautiously. Maybe we could even get some of those flags for, you know, some of the students. I don't know if they'd use it. Probably take them with them, who knows? So in summary, those are the things we'd like, we'd like for you to consider. We did a, sort of a survey of some of the homes, and 21 out of the homes we spoke to, 100% of the people were in favor. I understand there's a 75% approval. That must be before we can have, you know, that has to happen before we can, you know, make it, you know, to make the survey come to fruition. And in the meantime, we'd really appreciate more of a police presence. Officer Donley I spoke to today. He, I guess he spoke to some of his colleagues, and he's, you know, there was a patrolman out there today, and it was really helpful. He caught a couple guys, so that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say, staff heard all this, got the notes, they'll look into it. So, you know, we don't need to discuss if staff's aware of it already and no more. Here's the guy that's going to handle it, right there.
Can we get a feasible feasibility study of some sort on that?
Well, they'll analyze the traffic flow and the speeds and all that, and.
Friedman?
Take care of it.
You know, I've seen a lot of people over the years come in with these kinds of complaints, and you had one of the most organized, compelling presentations I've ever seen. You must do this for a living. That was really good, and you must have. this for a living. That was really good. And you must have shot hours of video to get that. No, I'm kidding. I know your street well because I live in the neighborhood, and I walk my dog there. I drive up and I'm one of the good cars driving up and down the block sometimes. And, yeah, there's, I mean, all around, around all of our schools, we have real problems during the week one school in session, particularly in the mornings, you know, all of those streets. And, you know, I drive down Palm a lot because I, my daughter goes to daycare there. And just getting across Palm, it's really scary. Like you said, a lot of blind intersections without, you know, that are, they don't have stop signs on the north-south streets, and a lot of speeding. You know that there's a process that we go through, and I know you're going through it, and I'm sure that you'll be successful in getting all of those things. And I think everything that you suggested makes a lot of sense. I think you can see in that, I didn't even realize it until I saw your video how wide that street really is, and that does encourage the speeding. So doing some kind of bike striping, I think, would be... it's not something we usually hear people request. I'm glad to hear it. But you're absolutely right. Just the impression of narrowing a road does make people slow down. They've done a lot of, you know, testing on that. So I'm fully in support of it. I know you're going through the process. I'm sure you'll have support from the Traffic Commission, and hopefully we won't have to see you back, and it won't take too long. I know you can help them get through the process as quickly as they can. And hopefully, you won't have a lot of opposition from your neighbors. That's the thing that tends to kill these. When the people you didn't suspect, the one who realizes that the stop sign's in front of their house, and they don't want to hear the starting and the stopping or the horns, you know, and you start hearing from them. So hopefully, you won't have that. And hopefully, it helps. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, a few seconds. A couple days ago, I'm on Chevy Chase, had a signal, right-hand lane, there's a car next to me, a car behind that car, and I had my window open, and all of a sudden, a guy in the sun car back leans his head over, yelling at the car, and going, "Hey, you want to race?" Sure enough, as soon as the signal went, they both took off.
Did you do it? Did you participate?
No, I was going... I didn't want to do it.
Last week, I did what the police say never to do. I heard two cars racing up and down our street. We live on a quiet street. And I saw, they stopped in front of my house, and they got out and they started talking to each other. And it was two kids, you know, early twenties. I was so mad. I went out of my house, and I used my best mom voice on them, and I yelled at them. And they actually were sorry, "We won't do it again," you know. They kind of, I mean, I'm sure they will, but I felt good for a few minutes.
Do it around your house.
I know. So I'm saying, "Don't do that again." I did watch them before I went outside. They didn't look too threatening.
We do get these requests once in a while. There's another request right now for another street in Glendale. But I think the fact that it's located so close to three schools and the fact that we have actually had some pretty tragic accidents, in fact, by Tall Middle School, within the last decade, it really warrants a closer look and thinking outside the box with the intent of how can we help? How can we make things better as opposed to, well, you know, that doesn't require, doesn't satisfy this requirement or that requirement. Let's make it safer for the neighborhood and for the kids.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, you're our eyes and ears. If people like you don't come in and tell us, we don't necessarily know. So thanks for coming in.
So indeed, thank you.
And being able to see it like that was
Yeah, we don't.
Amazing. That's very compelling, yeah. Very good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks for staying.
Next item is new business, and we have new business.
Yes. I'd like to move that the City Attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter to a retainer agreement with the law firm of Stinson Leonard Street LLP to serve as Federal Energy Regulator Regulatory Commission Council for the city of Glendale and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said monitor.
Second.
We have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Darian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanu?
Yes. Thank you. Next item is adjournment. I want to remind that today will be adjourned in the memory of Betty Evans, former Glendale treasurer, as well as Norman Mammy, our former Glendale Philharmonic director. We have a motion?
So moved.
And we are adjourned at 8:40 PM.